reopened. I will just remind councillors that in accordance with clause five point three of council's code of meaning practice, I inform the persons attending this meeting that A) the meeting is being recorded, live streamed and made publicly available on the council website and B) the persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. In relation to clause four point one A where a public forum is held as part of a council meeting, it must be conducted in accordance with the other requirements of this code relating to the conduct of council, which means that the public forum will be broadcast via live stream on council's webpage and included in the subsequent audio visual recording of this meeting. Now councillors, we are still in the meeting as of yesterday, so the prayer the prayer still stands, the national still stands, the apologies, so we've done all that so we won't be doing those again, so moving to the meeting, councillor McKnight.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to move a motion please that we change the order of business such that the notices of motion move to the end of the meeting.
Uh huh.
That N O M zero two is the last notice of motion or the last piece of business to be conducted.
Hmm.
And that we move O P E R zero one and C E O zero one to be the first two items of business we consider now.
Uh what were those two sorry?
Operation zero one and C E O zero one.
Operation zero one and C E O, okay great. Do you have a second for your motion? Second and councillor Moon, is there any discussion? Operations zero one. Okay, operation zero one, it's in book one, plus it's got attachment in book two. The Khan's Hill Aquatic and Recreation Centre draft plan of management, page two seventy nine, tab fourteen, recommendation two seven, two seventy nine, councillor McNair.
Happy to move as per the book, Mister Mayor.
Move councillor McNair, do we have a seconder? Second to councillor Harrell, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes councillor Rusevsky, before that councillor McNair, would you like to speak for your motion?
No, I'd just like to thank staff for the work that they've put into this and I understand the time sensitivity of what we're doing, so I'm really happy that it's come to us tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Sevji, are you speaking for or against the motion?
I have a bunch of questions, so um, I need to, need them answers to determine whether I will be for or against.
Yep, thank you.
Um, yeah, so one of the questions is, um, the current cost estimate for construction. What contingencies do we have in place if we exceed?
Can you put your questions through the, the chair or through the C E O to the C E O, please?
Through the mayor, through to the C E O. Um, what contingencies are in place if the project exceeds budget?
Thank you, through the mayor, um, as you may or may not know, the WISIG programme is a, is a grant funded programme. Contingency is held under the deed, when councils draw down on contingent funds. It has to be for a risk identified in the application for the, uh, the WISIG funding. And so the contingent is actually held by the state government, so that is typically twenty percent margin on project delivery cost.
Uh, same question, um, with the ongoing maintenance staffing and, and energy costs. Once the centre opens, how are we going to be funding all of that?
Uh, like any new infrastructure, the ongoing funding, maintenance and lifecycle contract costs in perpetuity will be met by council.
Thank you.
Um, I've also got a number of questions. Um, a number of declarations of interest and conflicts were raised in relation to NOM zero two. Uh, on the basis that persons were still under oath.
Sorry councillor Monahan, is your matter relating to this item?
It is, it's directly related to it.
Mm hmm.
I give you my word, it is directly related to Khan's Hill Pool.
And you can please direct your, uh, direct through the chair of the C E O, please, yes.
Um. A number of conflicts of interest were raised in respect of a different notice of motion. On the basis that persons were still in evidence and subject to a summons to give evidence at a public inquiry. Given that that NOM dealt with matters that were related to the public inquiry. Um, the key issues of the public inquiry that were announced and outlined. Non exhaustively by council assisting include paragraph three F. I I I, Khan's Hill Pool, will you be declaring a conflict of interest? In respect of this item, given it relates to Khan's Hill Pool? And given that you are still to be called to give evidence at a public inquiry.
So your question is to me whether I'll be declaring, I've declared the interest that I've, uh, that I intend to declare. It's up to each individual councillor to make the declarations as they, as they see fit.
Yes, so just to clarify, Mister Mayor, you're not declaring an interest in relation to this matter.
I have not declared an interest in this matter.
No.
Is there any further discussion? No, if there's no further discussion, I will put the motion all as a favour, please raise your hands against and declare unanimous. Okay. So that's operations one, we'll move just to C E O zero one. Which takes us to. Takes us back into the order of flow, so we'll flow from here in order, so, uh, C E O zero one. Page sixty six, tab one, with a recommendation on page sixty six, the extension of Mrs Dudley, the independent order of risk improvement committee, um, uh, member. Uh, councillor McNair.
Very happy to move as per the book, thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, councillor, sorry, I wasn't sure if your hand was kind of up or resting in a way. Move councillor McNair, uh, McNair, second to councillor Harrell, is there any discussion? I'll put the motion all as a favour, please raise your hands against, I declare it unanimous. Um, COM zero one. Uh, uh, appointment of councils, committees and affiliated bodies, page sixty nine, tab two, recommendation on page seventy in book one.
Like to move a motion.
Yes councillor McNair.
Uh, I'd like to move a motion that councillors remain on the committees that they are on currently for the next twelve month period.
Um.
Second to councillor Harrell.
I'm not accepting any.
You don't want to be on any committees?
No, to any committees.
Okay. Cool. Does that include governance, we're all on, we're all on, on the governance committee, aren't we?
Any non compulsory.
Any non compulsory committees? Let me just think about that word for a moment, non compulsory.
Is the governance committee compulsory?
Theoretically, I don't think so, but it does contain all councillors.
But we don't have to be appointed to that, do we?
The charter in front of me, no? All councillors are members, I think that's what it says, so if all councils are members, therefore does it even come up as a question? Well, I think the intent is there and, um, we'll just double check, so. We'll use those, you, you don't want to be on any, so, just so we have that noted down, councillor Monahan.
Not, not accepting any nominations to any of the committees nominated in point one.
Yeah.
Which doesn't include the governance committee.
Unless they are compulsory, or doesn't any.
Is the governance committee compulsory?
No, I don't want to say it.
No.
Discretionary.
Hmm.
Okay, great. So then, does anyone want to take your place on any of those committees that you are on? Councillor Hart?
Uh, sorry, yes, question, on, in the annual report. All councillors and meetings of attendances used to be recorded in there. I don't recall it being in the last term, but it certainly was in the previous term.
Hmm.
And the idea is, it allows the public to see. What committees, attendances, councillors are actually performing. Now, do we intend to do this again in this coming year as part of the annual report?
Um, I'll put that question to the C E O, my, my, I think my understanding is there is a minimum requirement with regards to attendance of council meetings. I just don't recall whether it can, uh, if it actually counts, if it includes committees.
Thank you, through the mayor, I'll, I'll check on the obligation of that reporting requirement in the annual report. And, um, and I'll get back to council whether it's actually reported, if that's something council would like us to do, please tell me so. Uh, and I think the director of community and lifestyle can identify which, uh, which committee councillor Monahan is on.
Through the C E O, councillor, you were on the Liverpool Youth Committee, but we have other, three other representatives, so we would still be. Within the, um, the delegated authority to, to move it forward, so if everyone else is satisfied with their. Other committees, and I've got a list in front of me, then we can move forward with that resolution.
Okay, great. Is there any further discussion? I'll put the motion all as a favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Next item is COM zero two, review and amendments to Liverpool Youth Council Charter two thousand and twenty five. Page eighty two, tab three, with a recommendation on page eighty three.
Happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor McNair, do we have a seconder? Second to councillor Hart, is there any discussion? I'll put the motion all as a favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Next item is COM zero three. Revocation, revocation. Revocation. Yeah, but she's going to stay in, if I recall correctly, yep. Uh, revocation of language aid policy. Uh, page one hundred, tab four, with a recommendation on page one hundred, move councillor Harrell. Second to councillor Amun, is there any discussion?
Yeah, one question through the mayor, um. How much has been spent on the language aid policy since twenty twenty two, including staff training allowances and admin?
I'll refer that to the C E O.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, through the mayor, I'll just revert that to, um, director of community and lifestyle.
Uh, thank you, through the chair, uh, the staff haven't actually been, we haven't used staff for a number of, um, years. So it hasn't been active, so, um, and we ve- very rarely use agencies, so. I haven't got the figure in front of me, but I can take it on notice if you wish to have the figure, but it's very minimal and, and that's why the recommendation's put forward.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion all as a favour, please raise your hands against, I declare it unanimous. Next item, whoops, sorry, we did COM, we've done COM zero four, we've done COM zero five. We'll now move on to COM zero six. Suspension of the alcohol free zone from Aquari Mall for Primavera Latin American Festival, page one hundred and eleven, tab seven, recommendation on page one hundred and twelve. Move councillor Hart, second to councillor Harrell, any discussion? So, uh, I'll put the motion, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Uh, next item is COM zero seven, office of local government, model code of meeting practice for local council in New South Wales changes. Page one hundred and fifteen, tab eight, with a recommendation on page one hundred and fifteen. Moved.
Happy to move as per the book, yes, thank you.
Second to councillor AJ, is there any discussion?
Um, yes, I've got a number of questions, um, through, uh, the C E O to the appropriate director. Um, is it the case that a draft code has already been put on public exhibition?
Thank you, through the mayor, director of community and lifestyle.
Uh, thank you, sorry, that, uh, no is the end, simple answer, we originally, um, the officer put the, uh. Resolution, sorry, the, the draft on public exhibition for a day, I said to take it off until we get a resolution of the council. Um, and that's why it's noted that way, so that was after, so if we can amend that to say that we'll go on. Public exhibition following the endorsement tonight.
Is the mover and seconder happy to make those changes?
On that, on that basis, I'd have to be moving, um, a foreshadowed motion. Uh, that the, uh, recommendation be adopted. Uh, but the code. The draft code put out is amended, that clause three point one. Ought to read. As per the existing clause three point one. In the current code of meeting practice. And two.
So three point one relate, relating to the timing of meetings?
Yep. Um, and also that council opts. To use clause fifteen point one six as opposed to fifteen point one five.
In the new code or the?
Fifteen point one five and fifteen point one six are interchangeable.
Um, but the, uh, what I mean, does that have any? Reference, are you referring to, you're referring to the new draft that's?
I'm referring to the draft, yes.
Okay, what page is that, please?
Two zero six. Bottom of page two zero six. Councils may use either clause fifteen point one five or clause fifteen point one six. The foreshadowed motion is proposing that council uses, adopts fifteen point one six. Uh, on the basis that that's consistent with the code that we've already adopted.
So can you just explain, sorry, just, can you just read them out to us, please, which ones they are referring to, just for the benefit of all the councillors and those watching?
So the bottom of page two zero six. Clause is fifteen point one five, fifteen point one six, fifteen point one six in the book reads N A. Um, what it should read. What it should read is clause fifteen point one four does not limit the ability of the council. Or a committee of the council to resolve to expel a person, including a councillor, from a council. Or committee meeting under section ten, subsection two A of the Act. Clause fifteen point one five gives a chairperson the absolute power to dismiss anyone, uh, from a meeting. I don't think it's acceptable that any one person gets to determine whether or not elected officials. People elected by the people get to continue to sit in the council chamber, it should be subject to a majority vote of the council. To suspend or to expel or to remove any other democratically elected representative from any forum. That's consistent with this, both the state and federal parliaments, it's a democratic right that we should be continuing to uphold.
Sorry, just, what do you mean by consistent with the state and federal parliament?
You can't just suspend people and throw them out, uh, you need to take, you need to take a vote. To have people removed from the chamber unless it's for disorderly conduct.
Yeah, so can the speaker ask people to leave the chamber?
In respect of disorderly conduct.
The speaker can.
Yes, but that's not affected by this clause. The clause gives the power, fifteen point one five.
Mm hmm.
To expel any person from the meeting, disorder can be dealt with in a different manner, it's already dealt with under the code.
Hmm, so this would be consistent with parliament then?
It would. In any event, that's what I'm moving.
I'm seconding the motion, the foreshadowed motion proposed by councillor Monahan. Okay, so that's a foreshadowed motion, we got that? Okay. Is there any other further discussion? Yes. Okay, one second, I'll get to the general counsel in a moment, yes councillor Kenny?
Uh, since we've been elected, there's been a number of sessions about the code. Particularly around, uh, clause three point one, um, it's my recollection that this. Council voted unanimously to have the provision included as per the current code of meeting practice. That is, the timings are set out are explicit. In terms of the opting in, uh, for fifteen point one six as opposed to fifteen point one five. For the reasons outlined by councillor Monahan, it would only make sense, like are the decisions made in this place. That they are the decisions of the majority of council as opposed to a decision made by one particular individual. This particular proposed foreshadowed motion is.
So, so I can't, Kenny, we're not, we're still dealing with the, the substantial motion. Um, should that not succeed, then we will do with the foreshadowed motion.
Well, on that basis, Mister Mayor, I propose to talk against the, the, the considered motion that's been proposed.
Okay.
And talking against the motion that's been proposed, to send out the public exhibition. A proposed code of meeting practice that is inconsistent with a resolution of council. Of this council in less than the last six months would be inconsistent and a waste of time. In circumstances where we've just made a decision that the timing of meetings as proposed is outlined in the current code of meeting practice. Specifically three point one was adopted by this council unanimously, therefore, to go out to the community, that one should be consistently proposed. As, as a timing of the meeting set in a particular place being that of Liverpool City Council chambers.
Yep.
And.
Yep. Are you finished? Are you finished?
No, I'm not.
Okay, sorry.
You keep commenting as I'm talking, yep, so I'm just, I'm not finished. In respect of speaking against the motion that's been put before this council. There's a draft policy that's been prepared, there's a raft of changes that have been proposed. One particular one that's been selected allows the chairperson, being the mayor. Absolute right to expel anyone from a council meeting. That shouldn't be the case, and council should propose to the community, community here vote people in. The opportunity to be able to select the proposed course, being one fifteen point one six. As the proposed course, not fifteen point one five as it's been drafted. As the code that goes out to public exhibition, speaking against the motion. But I do have a question through the mayor to the appropriate director. Probably that falls within the general council's remit, specifically. The realms of this proposed code being the selection process of selecting fifteen point one. Five as opposed to fifteen point one six, how did that occur? Who made that decision?
Are you finished?
No, no, that's the question.
Yeah, I'm saying, are you finished?
I'm finished the question, yes.
Thank you. I refer that to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I'll just refer to the general counsel on fifteen and three point one.
Thank you. I understand the frustration of having resolved a particular position on timings not too long ago. Only to have it come back again. The reason it has come back again is that O L G issued a new model code of meeting practice. They have removed the option. So previously, there was an option that you could choose between council resolution. Or specification in the code of meeting times. So they've taken away the alternative of being able to specify in the code. And it now only allows meeting times and dates to be set by resolution of council. That's a mandatory provision. We were required by section three hundred and sixty of the Act to adopt the mandatory provisions in the, in the code. So in that respect, the reason you have what you have in front of you is because we have to. There's, there's no scope to go around that. In terms of fifteen point one five and fifteen point one six, as councillor Monahan has identified, that is a choice. They are non-mandatory provisions and councils are, sorry. It is not mandatory to choose either one, it's mandatory to choose one or the other, as I understand it. And there's a choice that you have. In terms of why one or the other was chosen, I can't speak to that, I didn't prepare it. I, I don't, I assume it was just the officer's choice when they were putting it forward.
Through the mayor, to the appropriate director, who, who prepared this draft code?
Thank you. Through the mayor, I'll just refer to the Director of Community and Lifestyle.
Thank you. Through the chair, that was prepared by my manager, acting, sorry, manager, civic and exec services. Services who presented at governance. In terms of that clause, I can't answer that question, I'll take it on notice and investigate. My understanding is that the provisions of the first code of meeting practice were transferred and any variances were changed. So that could be the reason that that was in the initial one, but I can't confirm that and I will investigate.
Having said that, councillor, can I ask, councillor Kynne, what is the point of your question?
Well, the point is, there's been an option given by the officer local government. And for whatever reason, the recommendation that's been put before this council has been made and put before us is an arbitrary one. That you, as the mayor, get to make the decision as to which councillor gets expelled. And I'm interested to see why that decision was made as opposed to one that is decided by the democratically elected. Council that is before us, being a majority of eleven people.
So you, you want to know why a council staff member made a recommendation?
I want to know why it was made, the reasoning behind the decision. And why one was selected over the other when one is an option and so is the other. Why wasn't it put before council to determine which option is preferred?
Well, it, it is council, it's before council now, the council staff.
With respect, me, I hadn't finished, and the position is that we have been, we have been given in a proposed recommendation. A particular section, one over the other. Why wasn't it put before us? Specifically, why couldn't we choose as a governing body which one, fifteen point one six or fifteen point one five? They're valid questions, you don't think they're valid questions, Mr. Mayor?
Councillors, this whole booklet that we have in front of us. The CEO makes recommendations and.
Mr. Mayor, you asked me what I asked.
I'm not finished councillor Kynne.
You don't think they're valid questions?
I'm not finished councillor.
You don't think they're valid questions?
The CEO and the staff make recommendations throughout the whole booklet on every single item. Right, that's, it says recommendation, we move the recommendations. Councillors on the floor of council decide to choose whether they adopt those recommendations or not. Drilling into why they were made could be perceived as potentially putting influence on staff and saying, well, why did you do that for? You know what I mean? So if you're doing it for that one, why aren't you doing it for every other one?
What gave you that thought, Mr. Mayor?
Because of your significant interest in that recommendation.
As to why one option was chosen over the other. There are two sections as proposed in the model code.
Would you like?
I want to know the reasoning as to why one was chosen over the other. You don't think that's relevant?
Would you like that for every item?
This particular one, yes.
Why not, but why not the others?
Why don't you think this is relevant?
I'm asking you to.
I'm asking you, why don't you think it's relevant? If you're not going to answer my question, why should I answer yours?
Thank you councillor. Councillor McNaught?
I just wanted to make the point, and I haven't spoken for my motion yet. But the point is that this was on the agenda for the governance committee. And we had a lot of discussion at the governance committee about this. And it, we had options to make changes at the governance committee about this. So this is not the first time this has come before us. And if I may also say that it's going out on, on display. And at the governance committee, we discussed having an interactive session before the reports brought to us. And so we have ample opportunity to listen to what, and I understand the timing. To listen to what the community has said, but we also still have input, we're putting the cart before the horse. We still have plenty of time to make our decision on what we want to do. We just, we just need to get this moving so that we don't run out of the legislated time by the end of December. But I, I must say that this was put on the agenda at the governance committee and discussed at, at depth, in depth.
So having mindful of the, the comments of the general council. Just with regards to the foreshadowed motion then that I need to rule.
I'm happy to withdraw that clause, given that it's a mandatory provision now. Have been consistent in the past when proposing additional changes that were not consistent with the mandatory. Portions of the code, that I withdrew those amendments, so point three simply be deleted.
Lovely, thank you councillor Monahan. So that count, but point three is back up, okay, cool, so wonderful. All right, yeah, just going back to the original motion, is there any further discussion for or against the motion? Nope, write a reply councillor, or you've had it. All right, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare the motion carried. Next item on the agenda division, all those in favour, please stand. Thank you. Those against? Thank you, thank you councillors. Next item is com zero eight. Council Grants, Donations and Sponsorship Report. Page two hundred and twenty-two, tab nine, with a recommendation on page two hundred and twenty-two in book one, it's an attachment in book three. Moved deputy mayor, seconded councillor Hart. Is there any discussion? Yes, councillor Monahan? Councillor Kynne, do you mind turning off your microphone, please?
Anyone?
Yep.
My question's to you, Mr. Mayor. In respect of previous declarations of interest that were raised in relation to other matters that were before the public inquiry. Noting that people are still under their oaths or possibly subject to a summons to give evidence. Will you be declaring a conflict of interest in respect of this item? Given that whether or not councillors appropriately managed grants is a key issue. Outlined and identified by council assisting the public inquiry.
I don't understand the context of your question.
It's a straightforward question, are you declaring a conflict of interest? Given you have identified previous matters that are before the public inquiry. And that you made a decision to declare a conflict in respect of those items. This is similarly an item that is subject to investigation by the public inquiry. Will you be declaring an interest? It's a very, very simple question.
Have I declared any?
Point of order, please?
Yes, councillor.
I, I think this councillor Monahan has put this question to you once already, Mr. Mayor. And I, I don't see how the response could be any different to as we are all obliged to declare our own conflicts of interest. Should they arise? And that is completely, that's completely on the councillor as an individual to declare that conflict of interest.
Thank you councillor Hart and I.
Different item, it's a different question in respect of a different item.
Yes, I thank you councillor Monahan.
It's a simple question in relation to whether or not you're going to be consistent with your approach earlier to matters to be dealt with at the public inquiry.
So councillor, just if I can provide some clarification. Under the different relevant codes that council has adopted. It is up to each individual councillor, each and every individual. Sorry councillor, I haven't finished, I'm just giving you, just explaining to you how it works, I know it's still.
No, no, I, I understand perfectly well how it works.
Do you?
Yes, I do. So I'm asking you a question, the answer is a no, isn't it?
If you go to, we're not, sorry, thankfully, we're not in a.
No, thankfully not, because you actually have to answer the questions.
Sorry councillor, yes councillor McNaught, your point of order?
I'm sorry, but the, the tone and the manner of the discussion in the chamber is not appropriate for the way that councillors should behave.
Yes, and it's upheld, councillor, because, sorry, excuse me councillor Kynne. So just with respect to that, a councillor may put a question to a councillor, right, through the chair, and this time I am the chair. And it's up to each, every individual councillor if they choose to actually answer the questions, right? So what I was trying to say prior to being interrupted was, in front of everyone here, we have a run sheet. On this run sheet, you will find.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry councillor, I haven't finished.
I'm taking up a point of order. In respect of the condescending tone in which you're directing that at me. Similarly, I withdraw and will attempt to address my tone to you as well. I, I accept the point of order raised by councillor McNaught.
Yeah, great, I'm just trying to clarify that the declarations of interest were called early on in the meeting.
Is the point of order upheld or not?
I still haven't finished getting my point across, I'm being interrupted multiple times. So what I'm, I want to answer your question, because I'm choosing to answer your question. So declarations of interest were called, I've made my declarations of interest. And should an item be called, just I want to save you from asking me in the future, should an item be called that I believe I need to call interest? I will, I will there, because sometimes I do miss them, but I really appreciate your sincere consideration and reminding me of that. Thank you. So going back to the donations for the community, we have a mover and a seconded, do we have any discussion? I didn't call a vote, I don't remember calling a vote. I'll, I'll, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare that unanimous. Next item is com zero nine, child safety policy, page two thirty-one, tab ten, with a recommendation on page two hundred and thirty-two.
Move that what?
Move deputy mayor, seconded councillor McNaught. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare unanimous. Next item is corp zero one, New South Wales Grants Commission Financial Assistance Grants Policy, page two hundred and forty-nine, tab eleven, recommendation two forty-nine. Moved councillor McNaught, seconded councillor Harrell. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a few questions.
Yes councillor?
In relation to the advance payments.
Are they through the CEO or through the mayor?
The CEO, I'd say. With the advance payments, the commission warns, you know, we should be putting a stop to that. What is our backup plan if four point eight million suddenly disappears from next year's budget in relation to the advance payments?
The timing of the fair grant is always a concern for councils as it's unknown. But I'll refer for a more clinical response from the director corporate services.
Thank you. Through the chair, to the CEO. The budget was completed before the advice was given. We have always, this council has always been, to my knowledge. Estimating when funds are coming in. And until now, including now, they've been coming in in advance, they've for different percentages. So we have done the budget and it assumed a percentage. Hereafter, we will not assume any advance receipts of grants.
Excellent. In relation to the support for seniors, we've only got a one point five percent difference in order the, in the pensioner rebate. Locks Liverpool out of funding. Have we done any advocacy to fix a formula that kind of sure changes our seniors in the cost of living crisis?
I'll refer that to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the mayor, to the director corporate services.
This calculation is determined, to my knowledge, by the Grants Commission, it has nothing to do with council. We, we don't determine these percentages or, or the comparisons between the state average and, and council.
The question was, are we doing any advocacy rather than just accepting it?
Sorry, through the chair, I'm sure I understand the question, advocacy for, what for exactly?
Well, we're only out by one point five percent, which is a very small number. So are we talking to them, to the state government, to say, look, we're only out by one point five, it locks us out of critical funding? Rather than accepting it, are we lobbying them?
So, sorry, just, just to clarify, it's a federal grant councillor?
Correct, yes. But it doesn't stop us from sending an email or lobbying, so look, one point five percent, that's a very, very small number.
I undertake to send Mr Albanese an email, if that's what you want. I'll advocate for Liverpool City Council to be considered to the federal government for parity in pensioner rebate allowance.
Can we add that as a point to the? Would you be happy with that councillor Sevsky? Would the mover and seconded be happy with that? Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare unanimous. Next item is corp zero two, investment report, August two thousand and twenty-five, page two sixty, tab twelve, with a recommendation on page two hundred and sixty-one. Moved councillor Harrell, seconded councillor Hart. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councillor Monahan?
I have a question to you, Mr. Mayor. In respect of earlier declarations that have been made with respect to items that are before a public inquiry. Noting the key issues that are outlined by council assisting the inquiry. Relating to whether or not councillors exercised appropriate long-term management of its financial position. Will you be declaring a similar conflict of interest in, similar to that declared in relation to norm zero two?
Councillor AJ?
Yeah, to the chair and also to our fellow councillors. I believe that every corp or norm, individual councillor has to declare interest. So I will put the question to all councillors, are we going to declare? So I'll put the question to, um, all councillors, are we going to declare interest in all these, um, NOMs and COMs?
I'll, I'll, I'll take that as a, a, as a comment, if anyone can, 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 uh, can jump in if they want to. But is there any further discussion regarding this matter?
Is the answer no, or is there no answer? Or is there some other answer?
I'll refer to the, uh, refer you to the Code of Meaning Practice councillor.
Thank you, no.
Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Next item is Corp 03, Civic and Expenses Facilities Policy, page 273, tab 13 with the recommendation on page 273. Moved councillor McNaught, seconded, seconded councillor Harle.
Question, sorry.
Are you seconding it?
Yes, yes, that, that too. Uh, there just needs to be a correction, I believe, in the, uh, booklet two, page 16, 4.16.2.
Sorry, which, which page again, sorry?
Uh, page 16.
Yep.
Book two.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
D, all claims must be made within three months of the expenditure occurring.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the, uh, there is another area, not just there, particularly for mobile phone expenses, it's six months. We need to make them the same, I think.
Where does it say mobile phones?
Uh, it's, I don't know where it, it's earlier in the piece. It's one of the expenses. It can be claimed that it was definitely six months. This one is three, so we need to make them the same.
Okay, we can, we can have that noted, so just three months be consistent throughout the policy. I, I'll make it six months. Okay, make it six months the whole, okay. Understood, okay. Yep, okay, um, is the mover happy with that? Uh, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes councillor Siewski?
Um, 4.4.4.2, it talks about, um, I mentioned this at the last, uh, council meeting as a notice of motion regarding, uh, keeping a logbook. Now, it's been mentioned again and our policy is not to proceed to change this policy. This can be done if the governing body requires. Now, it keeps coming up that obviously all councillors should provide a detailed logbook of their vehicle usage, but yet we're not requiring it. Now, the public demands transparency. So we're basically so-
Sorry, just one moment councillor Siewki, was, was this matter dealt with at the last council meeting or? What was the, um, what actually happened with that?
I didn't get a second on my motion. That's what happened.
So the motion lapsed, so.
Sorry, through the, uh, councillor, is it in the NOMs tonight? I think it's in the, it's a separate NOM with the same issue tonight. Sorry, is it a question without notice tonight? Yep.
So that's fine. If it lasts, continue it, that's fine. Yeah, so once again councillor, are you moving, uh, are you speaking for, against, or moving a foreshadowed or moving an amendment?
Yeah, I want to add on there that, uh, all logbooks should be maintained by councillors if we're getting a council vehicle.
Yeah, well, I'll take that as a foreshadowed motion.
Happy to second.
Thanks. So going back to the original motion, is there any discussion for or against? All right, I'll put the, uh, motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, I declare it carried. Division, all those in favour, please stand. Thanks, those against? Thank you. Next item, um, on the agenda is I need another pen. Thank you. Um, we've done operation 01, so we'll now move into committees. Committee 01, Minutes of the Liverpool Powerhouse Board, held on the 12th of August 2025, page 289, uh, tab 15, recommendation 289, moved Deputy Mayor, seconded, councillor McNaught. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is committee 02, Minutes of the Environment Advisor Committee, held on the 2nd of June 25, 297, tab 16, recommendation 297. Uh, moved councillor Harle, seconded councillor Hart. Is there any discussion?
Yes, one question. Uh, 6.1 talks about a, uh, 600-
Question through the CEO?
CEO, yes. Uh, 6.1 talks about a $640 fine for abandoned trolleys. Can we find out in the last financial year how much was collected in fines as a result of abandoned trolleys?
Yeah, through the mayor, yes, we'll give you a report next council meeting.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it unanimous. Next item is committee 03, uh, Minutes of the Governance Committee, held on the 17th of September 2025. That's in Addendum Book Five, page three.
I'm going to move.
Moved councillor McNaught. Seconded Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Okay, so we now have the confidential items. We'll go through them and if, and if there's by exception anything we need to go into closed session for, um, we'll deal with it as it comes. Just bear with us for a moment. Thank you. Well, um, next item is CONF 01, page four. Yeah, so yeah, sorry, CONF, uh, 01, page four of the booklet. Do we have a mover? Moved councillor McNaught, seconded councillor Hart. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Next item is CONF 02, page 10, uh, recommendation on page 11. Do we have a mover? Moved councillor Harle, seconded councillor Hart. Any discussion?
Yes, I've got a question through the CEO. Um, the original easement, um, cha- attracted a, an amount which I won't talk about, but there's been an increase of, uh, 33% in terms of the width. So they've basically just taken the original figure and multiplied it by 1.33. We've no valuation, no inde- but independent market assessment. Um, a- and especially when we're talking about community land, we're, we're giving up some community land. Um, I'm just wondering why we didn't do a, a new valuation rather than doing it on a pro rata basis? Um, and, and considering that the market value of a drainage easement across public open space should be determined by evaluation.
Yeah, through, through the mayor, so the original easement, of course, was X. Uh, the adjustment was made to Y, uh, and that is the recommendation from the subject maca- um, matter expertise in relation to comp- compensable range of, of distance with the new eas- easement, um. I don't think there's a, a mechanism for, for a, uh, uh, in- independent valuation, uh, other than the subject matter experts. Um, but I can refer to Director Corporate Services for any other epiphanies.
The only thing I suspect to add through CEO is that, um, the cost of, um, utilizing a valuer may not have been worth, worthwhile, given the value.
In my opinion, it's, uh, community zone land and, um, evaluation is always prudent, especially, I think it's section 46 of the Local Government Act, uh, does allow an easement for utilities, but council must be satisfied that the use is in the public interest. And there's no other better alternative. Now, while we're alternative drainage easements explored, um, I don't know, it doesn't say anything like that, but, uh, I'm not comfortable with, uh, using an, an apportionment.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll just back my staff and the subject matter expertise that gave me the report. Uh, if there's any other, uh, resolution of council, I'll deal with it. The cost of, um, changing a specification on a technical easement and moving it to another easement may be more prohibitive than the, the delta between X and Y on this occasion. And also the cost, as the director quite rightly, uh, reminded me in relation to consultancy fees on the easement. And I think the Director of Corporate Services has got even more to add.
Through the CEO, um, this comes off the back of a previous report in December 18, where, where there was a valuation. Um, and again, if you look at the value that's, that's involved, um, again, it's probably prudent to accept the valuation determined by the officer at the time.
I just want to add, we're, we're now 2025 and it might be trivial, but we're unlocking the value of a townhouse development in the, in a developer's favour, which I'm not in favour of, especially when we're talking about community land. So I'm sure the developer would have paid for another valuation if we asked for it.
Thank you, through the mayor. I'm not even sure that's possible, but, um, um, again, if there's a resolution of council to undertake that, we'll do that.
Yeah, I'm just, just looking at this, I just wonder if in 2018 an agreement was made, so you'd want to think that that would then stand because that agreement has already been entered into for that amount? But now, seven years later, they realise they needed more. You would think that councillor Siewki, that, that, that if an agreement has already been made on the first part, that the, then the second part, the extra that they're asking for, you would argue would be then potentially subject to a valuation? Because if you've already agreed on the first part, and if, subject to what type of agreements were entered into?
Look, uh, I wasn't around in 2018, but I, I, I can't be voting for this unless there's a valuation.
With, just on that, is there, um, what, uh, policy does council have, if any, that guides the, um, granting of easements and? Because it's not, there must, there's got to be some methodology applied. I think that's what councillor Siewski's point is, which is a valid point.
So it, thank you through the mayor. I'll say that could be the director of planning in relation to what the policy that applies to the granting of easements.
Through the CEO, so a granting of easement can be agreed upon with respect to the terms of the easement between the two parties, um, or any other third party is involved. So it could be two adjoining property owners and council. There's no, there aren't really any restrictions per se on what terms can be brought into that easement.
I'd like to move a foreshadowed motion that this gets deferred.
I'll second that motion.
So, uh, sorry, through the mayor, uh, but councillors, I think, I understand we're going to go for a short break. Uh, would it be acceptable if I contacted the author of the report, understand their methodology, uh, recertify their subject matter expertise in this area and refer back after a short break?
We just defer this to the end of the meeting. And then let's see what information we have. Would the mover and second be happy with that?
Um, if we're going to take a recess, why don't we just take a recess as things stand, wait for the-
Yeah, we wouldn't take a recess, but they might need more than 10 minutes.
Come back. If the CEO doesn't have an answer when we come back, then we can move it to the, um, maybe the second last item, given that NOM two is still, uh, in the pipeline.
All right, so anyway, let's, so let's call, I'll, I'll call a, uh, 15 minute recess and we'll get back to this matter. All right, thank you everyone. We're back.
To the CEO.
Thank you through the mayor. So we're no further advanced. It looks like it's an adjustment in a fee for service rather than evaluation on land. Um, for redrawing the easement. Uh, so there's not so much as the tangible land. Position, it's the, it's the requirement to redraw the, make it a wider easement and therefore the fee for service was adjusted. But I can't confirm that with the author of the report, so I'm leaving it in council's hands as to how you want to deal with it. And I'll, sorry, and I'll take it on notice too.
So if we just go back. Was there anything, can you go up? Because there was a move, there was a foreshadowed motion that was moved for deferral. Uh, conf zero two.
Um, can I just clarify that the foreshadowed motion was that this item be deferred to a subsequent meeting, not the end of the meeting? Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Subsequent. Hmm. All right. Okay. Is any more discussion?
Just a point, Mr. Mayor, that if we are deferring this item, do we need to um clarify that we're waiting on additional information and that needs to be provided? I'm just saying that just maybe we should add the detail in about that deferral.
I don't think we need to be speculative. I think it's.
Okay.
It's, it's, the reasons are understood why. All right. So I am, did you guys want to merge the motions or we continue as is?
I'm happy to defer if the move is happy to defer or take the foreshadowed motion, make it the substantive one.
It's um, yep, council Harl, Har, you have the mover, councillor Harley, happy with that? So just defer. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion to defer. All those in favor, please raise your hands against declare unanimous. Next item is conf zero three, page twenty one, with a recommendation on page twenty two. Move Deputy Mayor. Seconded councillor Moon. Any discussion?
I just got one question through the CEO. Do we know who the occupier of this building is or couldn't find it in the report? Um, especially since it's been occupied with a, without an occupation certificate. Um, very unusual.
For the CEO.
Thank you. Through the mayor, Director of Planning Design.
Through the CEO, yes, we would know who the occupier is, but there is no operational need to disclose it for the purpose of this report.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, there's no further discussion. I will put the motion, all those in favor, please raise your hands against declare unanimous. Next item is conf zero four, page thirty two, with the recommendation page thirty two, councillor McNaul.
Um, I'd like to move with one additional point, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, what is that?
Um, the additional point would be uh number five, that uh as soon as the land is reclassified. Um, uh, it is um available to be used, it is to be made available to be used as public space.
Second, a councillor AJ. Any discussion?
Did you say, um. Can I just ask for the CEO? How long is it expected to taste for it to be reclassified and how quickly, if that is a, a, a draw, a process that takes months? How quickly could we have allowed the community to have access in that area to that open space? I is it possible before reclassification?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, through the Director of Corporate Services.
Through the CEO, uh, my reading is that upon settlement, it is classified as community land. So. What is the, what is the question?
I guess, yeah, if it would be a drawn out, ultimately, the, 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 the problem is that community over there doesn't have any public space in that pocket, pocket of the community and they're looking for some open space. Um. So the cra, if it was a matter of once it's purchased, one can we let the community use that as open space? And I, what the question was whether it's, if it's going to be a drawn out, for example, months to get it reclassified. Well, could there be something we can do in between? But if it happens immediately, then on settlement, then it should be.
On settlement, it, it belongs to council and it is community land. Um, if the land needs to be embellished to be used for whatever purpose, a pub, community purpose, then that's for council to consider.
All right. Thank you. That's fine. Great. Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please raise your hands against declare unanimous. Next item is conf zero five, page thirty six, with a recommendation on page thirty seven. Move councillor McNaul. Seconded councillor Hart. Any discussion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please raise your uh hands against declare unanimous. Next item is conf zero six, page forty one, with the recommendation on page forty two. Bless you. Moved councillor Harl, seconded Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? I will put uh the motion, all those in favor, please raise your hands against a declare unanimous. Next item is conf zero seven, page forty six, with the recommendation on page forty seven.
Over um foreshadowed motion?
Yep.
Defer this item for further community consultation.
Happy to second.
I just want to refer to the uh, the CEO, the relevant director.
Thank you. Through the mayor director, uh, sorry, Director Community Lifestyle.
Uh, thank you. Through the chair, the report uh talks to a number of engagements that we've had with uh WSA Co who are leading this. So we're actually not the lead agency. Uh, what we have done is been the um, one of the major stakeholders that um have been consulting with our land council. Uh, put it through our, our Aboriginal consultative committee and working with the geographical names board and WSA Co. So what I've provided to you today is a summary of all that consultation that was led. Um, or the community component, sorry, was led by WSA Co. Um, the reason I brought it back to the council is because of the resolution back in twenty twenty two when you asked um what would be the outcome. So largely in summary, we're, we're not the lead agency. Um, if you'd like further consultation, I have to bring that recommendation back to the geographical names board.
Councillor McNaul.
I'd just like to move as per the recommendation in the book.
Moved councillor McNaul. Do you have a seconder? Second Deputy Mayor.
Just in relation to the mechanics of what's happening here. Um, the deferral should be the substantive motion because there was no motion put to the council. Um, so whilst councillor Rostewski said foreshadowed motion, it ought to be the substantive motion. With the motion moved by councillor McNaul being the foreshadowed motion firstly. Secondly, I've got a question.
Yes, I agree with that. So if we can please make that. Thank you, councillor Monahan. Yes, you're next, Tom.
Um, to the CEO, to the appropriate director. Is the name proposed uh reflective of the um nation that extends out to that part of, of Sydney?
I refer that to the CEO.
Through the CEO, the origination of the name I couldn't tell you came from WSA Co. I, that's why I understand with um our First Nations community, there can be some different opinions. Which have been shared in the report and for full transparency, I've ensured that we've shared both arguments um for and against.
So it, it doesn't necessarily correspond with the correct um indigenous nation group. Is that the case?
I couldn't respond to that. I would have to take it on notice.
My understanding, uh, it does, councillor Monahan. This um, this originated from a um, a mayoral minute that was put up. Um, uh, and with consultation and discussion with um the relevant people who made the suggestion. And um the, yes, and it was whole part of, this was around when Bradfield, there was, there was issues with the name Bradfield. And it was like, well, well Bradfield, which was Rossmore, um effectively is now Bradfield. And then Badger is Creek and now can be an indigenous name in Cabragow. Um, um, if I can say that the um, I, I've the challenges of getting everyone to agree on a particular name is probably not something that we would achieve uh in our lifetime. So, yes.
We're not the lead agency.
Huh? We're not, we're not the leader. Yes, yeah. But yeah, it has been consulted, I think there's been ample consult, consultation on the matter. But I do think, um, I, I'll say that um yesterday we had our first um meeting of, let me just get the name right. Of the the Ki, the W Western International um Community Aviation Consultation Group. Um, we had our first meeting and there were um, uh, the, there were all, all the numerous stakeholders around the table were very enthusiastic about this proposal. Uh, and the, and the suburb name change. Um, so yes, so I, I strongly speak in favor of this motion. Is there any councillor Harl?
Sorry, it's difficult, isn't it? You need to switch names. Uh, look, I, I go to the Luddenham Progress Association meeting on a regular basis. And I can tell you that the people of Luddenham are not happy with that. They have said to me many times, Badger is Creek is what they're used to. That reflects the historical area that they are in. Uh, whereas Cabragow is something totally new. It's not recognized by the locals and therefore they would not agree with it. So I think you probably need to do a little bit further investigation, maybe talk to those people. And see what they say, but it does affect them quite a bit. So that's just simply my point of view. And, and I can say that I do regularly go there, go to the London Progress, which meets sort of once a month. It's a group of local residents and when they, when I spoke to them about it, I can tell you they were not happy.
And, and, and just on that, and um the name Badger Creek still does exist, just not on that, so it's not, yes, correct. Is there any other further discussion? All right. So we'll deal with the motion to defer first, and if that's not successful, then we'll deal with the foreshadowed motion that the report be adopted. All those in furl, all those in favor of the deferral, uh, please raise your hands. Against. Fine, let me just do it again. All those, sorry, all those in favor of the, the deferral, please raise your hands. And, yeah, those against, I declare carried. Just for this matter, we have to just wait a moment. So we, we can't close the door. The door has to stay open. The door has to stay open. He has to put himself in a position where he can't hear the discussion. So, yeah, go to, if you can ask him to go downstairs, please. Can I just confirm that he's, we can proceed? Thank you. Okay, wonderful. Okay. So next item is conf zero eight. Page number three, recommendation on page number four, councillor McNaul.
I'm happy to move as per the recommendation.
Move councillor McNaul. Do you have a seconder? Seconded councillor Amun. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question for the CEO. Um, the report claims uh, uh, to complement the in-house model. But I couldn't see any data on how much can be done internally. Um, are we under utilizing our own staff and our own equipment? And, you know, I'm a big believer in investing in, in-house capabilities. Um, as I, in my opinion, it saves ratepayers money in the long term. Could I get a little bit of insight into that?
Yeah, thank you through the mayor. I absolutely concur with you councillor in relation to self-performance. Hundred percent utilization and in, in-house on every single thing we can do in-house. I'll just refer to the director of community and lifestyle in relation to the dis, the question in relation to that.
Uh, thank you. Uh, through the CEO, we uh had an internal discussion with the existing staff and our USU around this matter and in regards to the model of delivery. It was very thorough, comprehensive and well thought through. Largely, um, the hybrid model where we have in-house and um external helps with the agility of the service that we need to provide. Um, also around the cost of um overtime and after hours, um, which is often these events, it makes more sense. Um, the staff were very um, uh, supportive. Um, and I took on board some changes that we could do with our in-house to support this better. So, uh, also, also around um utility of technical equipment and the like. So, um, and the expense in, that we need to pay.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I will put the motion, all those in favor, please raise your hands against. Declare it carried. Okay. So. So. Just need a minute or two councillors.
Can I ask what we're waiting for?
I'm just checking on something regarding councillor. Just need a moment.
In respect of what? Given we've got dead air time and items to be dealing with.
Just want to check with regards to. I'm just concerned about some of the information contained in here in these questions that should be under closed cover. So on the questions with notice. No questions, we have go with questions with notice and we'll do, then we're doing noms, noms have been put to the end. So if councillor just.
The motion was to put noms and questions with notice at the end. It wasn't put in a particular.
It was noms.
Then we should have dealt with the questions at the start, shouldn't we?
Yeah.
The motion was to move questions and noms.
It wasn't, no, that wasn't the motion. I'll double check. But anyway, councillor, if you want to have a quick, just give me five minutes if you want to have a quick toilet break and I'll just call it a quick recess. Was.
So there was just going back to the minutes with regards to the changing of the order of business. There was um just to make sure that the council, you moved the motion, can you just stay back what you know because I'm not sure if that exactly reflects it.
That the notices of motion move. But the notices of motion move to the end of the meeting and that item N O M zero two is the last. Last um item of business and that those two other items were to be moved forward.
Yes, so that's how I, that's my recollection of it. That's I agree. Alright, all right, all good, all good, thank you. Alright, lovely.
Just just a quick question, does that mean we should have done, should have dealt with the questions uh prior or sorry. Subsequent to operations one and C E O one because they weren't moved.
Let me just check.
They would have been still in the regular order after you put the two ahead of it.
Yes, on on reflection, they would have been the first matters. After C E O one, so my apologies councillors. Yes. So sorry, that was my mistake. Alright, so.
So we're dealing with the questions with notice now?
Questions with notice, yes. Let's see, question Q W N zero one, councillor Osevsky.
Yep.
Um councillors, the um question with notice zero two. Um I've spoken to the CEO and there'll be um rectifications regarding this publication. Um under the relevant section um of the act being uh ten A two. F. Yep, so question with notice three.
Um. Yeah, that's fine.
Four.
Yep.
Five.
Yep.
Six.
Yep.
Seven.
Yep.
Eight.
Yep.
Nine, councillor Green, deputy mayor. Ten, all good for me.
Um just in in respect of question with notice number ten.
Yep.
Um I've got a question uh to you, Mr Mayor. Um did it cross your mind prior to lodging this question with notice uh to declare a conflict of interest in relation to this matter? Uh similarly with NOM zero two, given that you're allegedly summoned to the public inquiry. Uh to give evidence about uh matters before the public inquiry which include um. The purchase uh of Civic Place.
Uh thank you councillor, I'll just remind you of section um nine point one eight and nine point one nine of the code of meeting practice.
So that's a no.
So next item, we'll now move on to NOMs. Oh sorry, hold on, one second. Oh no, that's it, sorry, yeah, my, I went from there to there. So we'll now move on to the notices of motions, so if we can go to. So NOM one is done, NOM two is the last one we'll deal with. So we'll move to NOM three, councillor Ostevsky, NOM zero three, sorry. Um page three twenty nine, tab twenty nine with recommendation on page three hundred and thirty.
I'd like to move that way.
Do you have a second there? The motion lapses. Next item is NOM zero four, page three three one, tab thirty with recommendation on page three three one.
I have an amendment.
Uh it's not an amendment councillor, you need to move a motion.
Move the motion, um just delete all the other points, leave point one.
Happy to second.
So moved councillor, just point one.
Correct, yep.
Second to councillor Monahan. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare unanimous. Next item is NOM zero five, page three hundred and thirty three, tab thirty one with the recommendation on page three hundred and thirty three.
Uh move that way.
Move councillor Ostevsky. Have a second there. Motion lapses. NOM zero six, we've um dealt with that already in adding your points to the um. Condolence motion councillor Ostevsky. So that means the only matter left is NOM zero two.
Yeah, I'd like to move an amendment.
Well.
All the motion, but uh if we can remove point number one on the motion of NOM O two.
Or just.
And just leave two and three.
Happy to second that.
Just. Can we just look at what you're moving, just to see if whether conflict still exists? NOM zero two, can we, sorry. What was your motion councillor?
Uh remove point one completely and leave everything else.
How could the conflict be removed? It's still, it's still a matter that's before the public inquiry that people are summoned to give evidence before. Um I don't see how it could possibly, the conflict could possibly have been removed in that way. Um it's it's the same motion, you read it last night, um it's the same thing.
Councillor, once again.
Before the public inquiry.
Sorry, councillor McNaul?
Sorry, I just wanted a moment for people to consider and multiple times tonight we have. Um explored the fact that councillors are responsible for making their own decisions about conflicts of interest. So respectfully, if people could have a moment to personally consider what they would like to do, that would be much appreciated.
Well, uh personally councillors, I am with the removal of point one. Um I am um I do not believe I have any interest and I will stay in the chambers. I don't know how technically that goes with regards to updating. It's a new one. We always find a new one, I think. But um. No, I think it's, I think it's fine to just to proceed and I just update it, we've obviously noted um. The motion, the motion that's moved.
It changes your your.
Correct. No, as in I no longer have a conflict whatsoever. Hmm.
New motion, so the conference being removed.
Correct. There's nothing to declare, yeah, so we can maybe just make, we can maybe just note that in the minutes that because of the change. Yep.
Is it simply the words public inquiry hearings that was objected to? Was that, was that the only part of the motion that gave rise to an alleged conflict? Because it's, the substance is the same, it's the same as it was last night. Um we could have, if this, if this was the case tonight and it was the case last night because it's the same motion. We could have just had a recess instead of quorum being removed. And an adjournment in accordance with the code of meeting practice to the next practicable day. Uh we we wasted a day over three words and however many syllables that is.
Not only for points of order, if they, I I think um uh there was um. If there was a uh a when people declared, there was declarations were made based upon the motion that was in the, that was most in the in the booklet. Um I'm sure in 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 hindsight, maybe there had been some discussion prior to the matter. Or prior to saying, let's defer the meeting for twenty four hours. Um you know, we could have had a little bit of a sidebar in the discussion, I can use that term, maybe, maybe we could have just dealt with it yesterday and so on.
Absolutely, we could have.
Yeah, but that wasn't, I was outside, so I didn't make that decision.
No, but we could have dealt with it before everyone left.
Yeah, that's.
If there was a potential conflict, if there was a potential conflict, people must have considered it beforehand. People were referring to legal advice that they obtained, they must have had the thought in their minds at least a few days beforehand.
Whenever people had that, that's once again, it was a, well.
Determined on the night or did you determine it beforehand?
If I can, if I can say, I'll, I can only speak for myself and I'm happy to answer.
I'm only asking yourself at this stage.
Yeah, so I was, um I made the decision uh that day, um.
You got no legal advice about it?
I made the decision when I made the decision, right, that day, as I said, so.
Without any legal advice.
With regards to, uh I'm not disclosing any legal advice that I've had.
No, no, I'm not just asking you to disclose it, whether or not you obtained or sought legal advice or or thought to obtain legal advice.
I never envisaged, sorry, let me put this way, had I envisaged. That the meeting would have been uh uh uh.
Adjourned.
Adjourned till.
Were you not aware of the provisions of the code of meeting practice?
Councillor, can you um appreciate it? Uh I'm trying to answer a question, I'd appreciate if I can answer the question. Um had I envisaged that an adjournment would have happened that brought us here today. Um I would have asked councillors to defer this particular matter till the end of the meeting.
But that could have been done at any stage yesterday, couldn't it?
Well, I wasn't, I, like I said, when I walked back in here and found that we deferred for twenty four hours, um adjourned for twenty four hours.
Were you aware of those provisions prior to that adjournment?
Councillor, I'm 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 aware of the um of the of the uh the code of meeting practice, so.
Did you become aware of those provisions?
Thank you councillor, it's um the um.
But was, did you become aware of them that night or were you aware of them prior to that?
Uh thank you councillor, I refer you back to um nine point one eight and nine point.
Respect of any um motions that could have given rise to a conflict.
Councillor Hart, your point of order is.
Came out on Wednesday night, didn't they?
This examination by councillor, excuse me councillor Monahan, this examination by councillor Monahan.
Yes, I, yeah.
No, I I moved a point of order, thank you, I moved a point of order, I'm being heard by the mayor.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillor, uh thank you councillor Monahan, thank you councillor Monahan. Um I refer, a point of order has been called by councillor Hart, councillor Hart, what is your point of order?
This examination by councillor Monahan has got nothing to do with the motion put before us.
Um thank you uh councillor Hart.
Directly related to the motion.
Thank you, it's my decision to rule on matters of order, I I and I rule in councillor, I uphold the point of order.
Moved a a a point of order earlier that wasn't addressed, taken up.
With regards to.
With regards to earlier, I moved, I asked a point of order, I asked that um the tone of voice that you were using towards me was condescending. There was no response to that uh uh point of order being taken.
Sorry, yes.
It was ignored or there was no ruling and I didn't hear the ruling.
Oh my apologies, my ruling was that at that point in time, I think what was it, thirty, forty minutes ago was that, no, I don't agree, it was condescending. I was just refreshing everybody's mind with regards to the order of meeting and because the meeting was adjourned. It is not as, I guess, smooth flowing as a normal meeting, so I'm just referring that. I did not call those, the uh conflicts of interest because we were still in a meeting, so that's why, I was just referring you to that. So there was no intent to be any form of condescending, just trying to clarify. So once again, going back to the matter at hand. I have done my declaration, I don't know if anybody, if any other councillor maintains their deputy mayor.
Um I would need to declare a conflict of interest given that. Much of the co- the context of these points have been evidence that I've given in closed um session. So um probably non-compu- not, oh not, non pecuniary. Uh. I think significant, I would still leave the chamber.
Thank you. I I don't believe you need to fill out another one, I think it's still the same one, still.
Isn't it a different motion, don't you have to declare in respect of a different item?
It's still NOM two, you can update it however you'd like to do it, it's fine.
Is it the same or is it different?
Um it's the NOM zero two is what the item is, so it's still on.
But the substance has changed, the title, I accept the title remains the same, but the substance is different, isn't it? It's a different motion.
Depends on what she wrote on her.
That's how the conflict was removed in respect of yourself, correct?
I'm I, the uh, I will, once again, I'll refer to the um the practice of how councillors choose to.
That's fine, that's that's the answer.
Um councillor Monahan, can I please, I think I have tolerated um. Given you signi- tolerated your behaviour and given you significant leeway, right? Um the matter with regards to a councillor choosing to make a declaration of interest. Is up to them, right? Now, once again, we are in a situation where we've had an adjourned meeting, right, it's NOM zero two. I'd appreciate if you can just show a little bit more respect to uh the chair. Um I know that once again, you're you're very knowledgeable, but I'd appreciate if you can just uh, once again, a little bit more respectful please. Um does anybody, just one moment, does anybody else want to declare any interest so we can move on with the matter? No? Okay, great.
Yeah, I've got a question, uh Mr Mayor.
Is it regarding the the motion?
Yeah, it's regarding, it's regarding the motion specifically. The motion in its entirety. Is the same as what it was propositioned as yesterday.
Point one has been removed.
Point one, it was not the motion.
Point one was part of the motion.
Point one was information pertaining to where it was discussed, but there's been large parts of this meeting. In every meeting we've had since the inquiry was called before we were elected in September of last year, that's been substantive.
So councillor, you're asking a question?
The the question is.
Yep.
The question is specifically, you you made inferences earlier that there should have been a sidebar with respect, quorum was pulled. Without discussion about, from the chair yourself, Mr Mayor, about whether or not it could be canvassed through the mover and seconder, whether it would be appropriate. If you supported the substance of the motion as opposed to whether or not it was deposed or evidence was given at an inquiry, the substance of it.
Councillor, what is your, under nine point one eight, I ask you to put the question directly, succinctly and respectfully without argument, please, what is your question?
Question to you, Mr Mayor, why did you leave the meeting yesterday when the substance of the motion was the same? Why did you not indicate to the mover and seconder that the substance of the motion would be supported? Absent, absent the information pertaining one that it was discussed and disclosed at the public inquiry, would that not have saved everybody a day?
That's three questions, thank you.
Could you answer all three please?
I refer to nine point one nine of the code of mini practice.
Um so you're not answering the question?
Uh once again, I refer to nine point one nine of the code of mini practice. Is there any further discussion regarding this matter? Councillor Osevsky, are you speaking for or against the motion?
For, um my esteemed colleagues raised some very good points, now we. Every councillor had an option to put in a foreshadowed motion, if that was the issue. They could have put a foreshadowed motion in by removing point one. By delaying this meeting twenty four hours, it's incurred the rate payers additional costs. And not only that, we got a, we got an email.
Sorry, thank you, saying councillor, um Amun, what is your point of order?
Through the chair, can the councillor identify who postponed the meeting? Because I sure didn't.
Alright, um thank you councillor, I'll 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 enter, um the uh. Oh sorry, excuse me councillor Monahan, I rule a point of order on you, I ask that that be, that be withdrawn and an apology be given. I rule a point of order on you, I ask that that be, that be withdrawn and an apology be given.
I withdraw and apologise that the provisions were applied last night.
No, no, the apology really, you made the statement that I do not know the Code of Meeting Practice. Right, that is highly disrespectful, all right? And I'm, as a point of order that I'm calling in you, I ask you to withdraw that statement and apologise.
I withdraw and I apologise, the provisions were applied as they were last night.
That wasn't what the, you made comment about, the apologies about my knowledge of the Code of Meeting Practice.
With respect, through the chair, Mr Mayor. You didn't apply the Code of Meeting Practice yesterday. You didn't. You're the chairperson of this meeting, you're the mayor and we're the council.
Great.
And we're entitled to hold you accountable to whether or not you, you apply the Code of Meeting Practice properly.
Thank you councillor Kineb, so it's been clarified councillor Moon's point regards to that. Those who are left in the chamber are the ones who made a decision with regards to, went to it. Because it could have been adjourned for ten minutes, fifteen minutes or twenty-four hours.
You could have had a discussion with us, you could have raised a foreshadowed motion, there's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of. Different options that could have been hit to, couldn't have they, Mr Mayor? But you're simply proposing one option, which is that it was.
Thank you. Councillor Ostevsky, can you please continue with your, um.
Yeah, so coming back to my motion, um. The option of a foreshadowed motion was available to each and every councillor in this room. If they had an issue with a particular point of my motion, they could have eliminated that motion. And the perception is, I don't think the, the councillors that walked out understood. The ability, when you pull a quorum, what could happen.
Yes councillor McNair, what is your point of order?
I'm, I'm, um, I'm, I'm opposed to the term that has been used a couple of times now, pulling quorum. I declared an interest in a matter and I was under, under assessment of that interest, I left the meeting. Using the term pulling quorum has connotations that it was. Potentially not done for the right reasons and it was done for the reasons of a conflict of interest. And if the majority of councillors had that same conflict of interest declared, there is nothing that anyone can do about that. That is the situation that was last night. I would appreciate that if we're going to move. Do this business now that is before us, N O M zero two. That we either speak for or against what is before us now and we vote on this motion.
Yep, so, um, I uphold that councillor Ostevsky. The motion, that the matter, you're making accusations of councillors, um, please ask you not to make accusations of councillors. If you'd like to debate this matter, please speak for the motion and the contract of the motion. Not what happened yesterday, because this is what's in front of us today.
If no one seconded this motion, I'll second the motion.
Great, okay, second.
I think councillor Monahan did second it, yep, um, if no one's ready to speak for it yet, I'm happy to speak for it.
Yep. We'll wait for councillor Ostevsky to finish as the mover of the motion.
So, uh, obviously this is a, a major issue, the council Fa- Facebook page, um. In terms of, it's owned by the community, it's owned by the ratepayers. It needs to be dealt with, it's, it's quite a good motion in that sense, it's, it, it basically doesn't put our staff in a very difficult position. In relation to point C. This matter is, I think, it's being debated out in the, uh, out in the public forums where. There is a lot of concern about our Facebook page. It seems to be one-sided, um, and whatnot, it, this gives it a bit of clarity. And it gives it a bit of transparency with the, uh, with the ratepayers, we're not playing politics here, we're not showing favouritism. It's a true public asset, quite a lot of followers. And every resident wants to see the full picture, not only a, a little segment of the picture, a full picture of actually what we're all doing. So that's why I support this motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll speak for the motion.
Yes councillor Kineb.
Uh, Mr Mayor, I think it's, uh, it's always important to. On the quest to becoming better, that we learn from our mistakes in the past and that we make changes. Uh, and those changes are for the better, to ensure that we don't make the same mistakes that we've done historically. It's the whole point of these learnings, the whole point of motions like this, so council can improve. And move past decisions made historically that weren't for the better, that were for the worse. Uh, so I thank councillor Ostevsky for, for bringing forward a motion like this at an appropriate time. To rectify issues, uh, from previous councils. And these particular issues.
Thank you, councillor Kineb. Councillor McNair, he's speaking for or against?
I'm, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm, just want some clarity from what we've just heard that. Um, while speaking for the motion, councillor Kineb spoke about mistakes of the past and I'm not sure that we are aware of any of those. Mistakes of the past or anything that he's alluding to, um, there's certainly nothing in the motion that. Uh, suggests that.
Yep, all right, is any further discussion?
Uh, sorry, point C sort of, uh, addresses that.
Thanks, I'll now, uh, would you like to write a reply councillor Ostevsky? Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion carried, there being no further.
I'd like to call division.
Division, all those in favour, please stand. Those against? Thank you, I declare the motion carried, there being no further, um, business. And I, I declare the meeting closed at eight twenty-nine P M, thank you.